I mean, it's not been feeling good all day, but I'll just have to say. It seemed okay. How do I do this? There we go. Timer and voting results. Oh, it's still warming up. Is it still warming up? I'm sorry. Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Audubon Lauer.
Here.
Audubon Sage.
Here.
Audubon Malumbwe.
Here.
Audubon Burgess.
Here.
Audubon Painter.
Here.
Audubon Schmidt.
Here.
Audubon Black.
Here.
Audubon Hallman.
Here.
Audubon Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move to a public comment. I just wanted also to clarify that we have three public hearings this evening. If you're here to speak on the public hearings, you can certainly wait to speak during that period of time. But at this point, we have five people who have registered for public comment. You can have up to three minutes. And just to clarify for the audience, we don't respond necessarily to people's concerns, but if you want direct, immediate answers, you can come to my mayor's open house, which is every Friday before a Monday City Council meeting, so we just had one this past Friday, from 4:30 to 5:30. You can get answers in real time and actually have discussions, and so I highly recommend them. So, at this point, we start out with Patricia Martin and then Bob Clay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Patricia.
The police forum last month was especially interesting in view of the continued tragic happenings in our country and elsewhere. In contrast, Chief Sutherland detailed carefully and professionally what we could do to limit the effects of such situations happening to us, that this can be done by making reports through the police themselves. The visual presentation included examples of forms to be filled out, how the forms are analyzed by three people, and the results, which can range from verbal reprimands to termination. Moreover, we also saw how the relationship between us and the law enforcement officials can be one of mutual help and cooperation, an approach that I find especially reassuring. I like the forms and copies because we can see the officers in a personal light, and we are fortunate to have police forces and sheriff's deputies in our area that are encouraging us to do this. And through the Police Neighborhood Watch, I receive online warnings of, for example, burglaries in my area, placed on a map, and car thefts, among others. This is why I continue to support the police, through my taxes too, because as an older citizen, I want to feel safe in my community. I don't want to walk down a dark or lit street or into an unfamiliar or familiar building and worry about what could happen to me. And knowing how the police work and seeing their cars on the streets gives me the security. And this is why I attend the city, county, and state meetings too, for I'm also learning how to take care of myself. I'm particularly excited about the mental health programs being developed by the county, for they are also of great benefit to our communities and another important way to curtail potential destructive situations. There are also other local programs that can be of help too. The growing Nextdoor Online site also gives advice on neighborhood topics ranging from criminal activities to inquiries about maintenance people, and I put in two requests for the latter and I got responses within a few hours. These are methods that older and younger people can use to protect themselves. Again, focusing once more on older people, there are also courses that they can take for additional information at, for example, the ISU Academy of Seniors and Luther Oaks University. In such classes, older adults learn and analyze such subjects as the nature of evil, the functioning of the brain, and our legal rights with the help of the teacher and with each other. For we do have rights that can protect us as older citizens and need to be reminded of them, as once more they can give us the security we need at this difficult and complex time of life. And we can read about them online too. The Adult Protective Services Act, for example, is readily accessible. And that brings us back to the support of our law enforcement team. About two weeks ago, I woke up early one windy morning to a clashing noise at my door. I was frightened, of course, and I called 911. And about 15 minutes later, a uniformed policeman came and with a smile on his face told me that my door had become unhinged. I'm proud of two things. One, because of the image the police have established in our community, I wasn't afraid to telephone for help. And two, that Officer Hayward, who arrived, didn't act as if I were an idiot, although I felt like one. This is another reason why I continue to support our police and why I will join them at the mall for cookies next week. So thank you again, Officer Jones, for organizing this holiday get-together. Okay, and Alex got a nice Scotch pine tree for me.
Okay. Thank you, Patricia. Bob Clay and then Bruce Meeks. Thanks.
I just have a comment regarding, apparently, the council's considering the new Tiff District. And I would like to express my opposition philosophically. I'm opposed to the government picking winners and losers in business and areas where they want to lower taxes or have special funds to go to one business as opposed to others. Basically, the politically favored few get special deals and then the majority of taxpayers end up paying for it. And so, I'd also like to say that, you know, I've heard the council speak many times on the need for downtown development and strengthening downtown. When you put funds or reduce taxes in other areas, like on the east side, you've got to realize that that has an impact on the rest of the city. This favors the rest of the city and it's going to hurt downtown. Not that I'm a big supporter of spending money downtown, but I'm saying you can't just go out and have special things on one side of town and not think that it's not going to have an impact on another area. So, that's a comment I'd like to make and appreciate your thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Bruce Meeks and then Charles Reberts, I believe.
Good evening, elected officials. Nice to see you all. Sorry that Mr. Hales has his situation to do with. I happened to grab a Holiday Inn pin tonight. Don't know what to say, but I don't know everything just because I stayed at a Holiday Inn. But I do know that there's eight entries in the Fiscal Year 2013-2014 Journal at $2.4 million. I do know that the Moody's Report for Fiscal Year 2014 reported that $2.4 million transferred to the Coliseum Fund will be written off. That was in your council packet, December 16, 2013. I also know that the CAFER talks about a $2.4 million advance to the Coliseum. This balance from the water fund directly quoting from City of Bloomington information in the CAFER to cover operating expenses. The Moody's Report again says will be written off. I've been analyzing three years of detailed budget information that I had to get, and it took me three years to get it. Some of you in the council have heard requests from your own fellow councilman, can I have a detailed budget? I've got one. I've got three years. I've got the journals, I'm going through it, and I'm running forensic auditing against it. I hope I don't find anything. So far, I've found some really good things that I hope to get to the council. I think going forward, if you want to have self-reliant enterprise funds, sewer, water, parking, Coliseum, golf, Abraham Parking, that you need to adopt a budget policy where inter-fund transfers, like the ones that occurred with this $2.4 million, come before you on a case-by-case basis. I don't believe any of you sitting here really realized when you voted that night, you wrote off $2.4 million. Now, to us citizens, $2.4 million, if you had a dollar bill up here and you could stack $2.4 million here, would be 750 feet in the air. It's kind of important we get this right. We've been moving money around for years, clear back to 1999, with these inter-fund transfers. Yes, it's legitimate. Yes, it's legal. But when you pull that money out of there for a loan to another fund, you pay it back, but there's a lag time. I don't know how much it is. I don't know if we've paid all the money back yet or not. Our wonderful finance department can probably tell all of you. I think you need to do a 15-year review of the inter-fund transfers and see what's been paid back and what hasn't been paid back. I think this practice needs to come to the council, just like bills and payroll do. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Reberts and then Sid Kendrick.
Hello, my name is Charles Roberts. I'm sorry that...
Roberts, excuse me.
Sorry about that. I've never been to one of these meetings before. I don't know how about to go it, so I'm here for Agenda E as far as paying this officer off on his being fired or whatever. We're taught to teach our kids to know right from wrong. I have two sons with autism. It's tough. Me and his mom go through daily struggles. At no point ever did I ever think about mistreating my son, ever. I think that instead of you guys paying this guy off, how about using that money to better educate the law enforcement that we have here on dealing with issues like that? We haven't, as far as I can see, there is nothing in place to establish whether they're mentally, you know, able to deal with situations like that and to not go offhinged, you know? And I know we're not here on this specific subject, but I think paying this guy off is sending a message to people that as long as you wear a badge, you can do what you want. This is ridiculous. I don't care how you look at it, or how anybody sees it, or how anybody's looking at me right now. This is ridiculous. I won't take no more of your time and I won't wait for an answer because I already know it. Thank you.
Sid Kendrick.
Thank you for allowing me to take a moment of your time. My name is Sid Kendrick and I'm the president of the Hershey Grove Homeowners Association. And on behalf of the homeowners of Hershey Grove, we appreciate you, the City of Bloomington, working with the Snyder Corporation to develop trails and sidewalks in lieu of putting a park in our subdivision. Thank you very much. We truly appreciate you listening to our wishes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we move right along onto our agenda to recognitions and appointments, and if I could ask Nora Dukewitz to come forward. Nora's going to read the participants and give awards and certificates to people who graduated in Bloomington 101, the Citizens Academy, fall of 2015. And this is certainly part of our broader movement of the mayor, council, city manager, staff, and Nora to educate our citizens and to have people more actively involved. So, I'm going to come forward and you're going to call out the names, all right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is, just a few weeks ago, our third session of Bloomington 101 wrapped up, and again, it was another great session. I'd like to thank the participants who are here tonight on behalf of staff. It was another great session. So, thank you very much to all of you. As you hear your name being read, please come forward. The mayor will present you with a certificate. We have several of our participants here tonight, but we do have some that are not here. Olimil Ashford. Deborah Brown. David Birch. Tara Henry. George Hyunkar, who is not here this evening. Teja Jani. Tony Lee Lathrop. Our very own Sherry Lawson. Margot Mendoza. Kimberly Mensah. Tim Mitchell. Michael O'Donnell. Marcia Maxon Swartz. Sarah Taylor. Robin Vandermeij. Sarah Villa Fuerte. And last but not least, Cat Woods. So, once again, thank you to our participants. Thank you to administration and to you, council, for supporting this program. And thank you also to some of our past participants who I see in the audience. I think it makes us all very happy that continue to be involved with their government. Thank you.
And on that exact precise note, we have a first class of Bloomington 101 nominee this evening for the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, and that is Michael Gorman. Michael, you're a class of 2014 in Bloomington 101, right?
Yep.
The inaugural class. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, we move right to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone from the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Starting the vote, then obviously, an a is in favor of the consent agenda as presented. Okay, sorry. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Next, we move right along to a public hearing and action on Fourth Amendment to the annexation agreement with Dave Federer, trustee of McLean County Land Trust. And at this point, I want to go ahead and call the public hearing to order. Is there a motion? We can do this by voice vote. Is there a motion to call the public hearing to order, please?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Hallman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in our public hearing, and I'm going to turn it over to a brief presentation to our corporate counsel, Mr. Jurgens.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Tonight, we've got three different annexation agreement amendments on the agenda. Each of them have their own separate public hearing. This is the first of those three. This first one, along with the second one, are somewhat connected in that there is some individuals involved, the same individuals or entities involved to some degree with both of those. This first one deals with Fox Creek. We have been working for several months, if not a year, to try and resolve some outstanding issues, both with the Fox Creek and Hershey Grove developments, and have had a very successful working cooperative relationship with the developer of those subdivisions and the city staff. In this amendment with Fox Creek, we are addressing the completion of several streets, making sure that the streets get completed in a timely fashion. We're also addressing repayment of a development fee. In the previous annexation agreements, it set forth a development fee of about $2 million that was owed to the city. All of this has been paid, except for $562,194, and that remaining balance will be paid $100,000 within 10 days and then a little over $5,500 per month at a minimum, but there could be more based on the number of lots and when they're sold. The original development fee was to be paid back over time based on when the lots were sold. Because of the downturn in the economy, the development fee was not all paid back by the end of the term. So, we've come up with an agreement. We're not waiving anything. We're not negating or abating any of the development fee. We're basically just putting a new schedule on that. There's also been an issue with the detention basin in this development, and part of the agreement provides, this is the Pepper Ridge Detention Basin, that the developer will clean and regrade this detention basin and that they will also pay the city $20,000 so we can seed the detention basin. The staff has been very happy with the agreement that we've been able to work out, be happy to answer any questions and/or address any concerns that the council has.
Ask questions, and then we'll open for a public comment. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on this development agreement? And Donna, is there anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, I'm Donna Bowlen. I live in Ward Two, which is where Fox Creek is located. On page 210 of your packet, this particular ordinance has already passed, marked as passed. And as a footnote in your comprehensive plan on page 40, the city invested $10 million to sewer this area and has recouped approximately 15% or 1.5 million of its investment as of 2013. The sewer system here was engineered to serve over 4,000 acres of residential land with four units per acre, serving over 56,000 persons. The area developed as of 2013 is about 300 acres, which is 7% of the projected, and has a population of approximately 3,600, which is 6% of the projected. The original agreement, I don't have the original agreement, so I only have the details presented. Snyder is offering these custom homes for $48,000, and we were recouping $4,000 according to the agreement. There is no mention of the fire station that's on Fox Creek Road adjacent to another development that he put out there. I don't know if there's any outstanding funds required from that. The 12th addition, which this is referenced to, is situated around the Arnold Palmer Signature Golf Course in central Illinois, and it's called the Fox Creek Country Glove even though it's a city-owned golf course. I feel also that the seven years that this is going to be dragged out is a continuation of an interest-free loan, which I don't think is appropriate. And using the economy as a feeble excuse, because between the time, from 2000 and on, he annexed six additional areas and developments. And we don't know, I don't know whether or not he owns money or owes money for those developments either. And according to Chapter 24, completion of all public improvements need to be completed within two years, which they have not been, and penalties for such violation range from $50 to $500, and the minimum fine would total $584,000, so the maximum fine of $4.6 million. So, I'm just trying to put this into perspective that I feel he's getting off easy. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. At this point, if there's no one else to speak, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Nothing.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt, I guess. Split the difference. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and now we move to consideration of an ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to an annexation agreement with Dave Federer as trustee of the McLean County Land Trust. And for purposes of discussion, is there a motion and a second for this? I will make that motion, Mayor.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Sage, and the second is Alderman Lauer.
Okay. Discussion. Okay, Alderman Black.
Thank you. I guess my question is for Jeff. Suppose the council were to not pass this this evening, what would we be looking at with kind of the next steps at that point in time?
If the council were not to approve this, we'd have to go back and, you know, continue negotiating some sort of an agreement. Keep in mind, we've looked at this as kind of a global settlement and resolution, because we're not only dealing with Fox Creek, we're also dealing with the Hershey subdivision. And in the Hershey subdivision, we're getting out of some obligations that the city has, theoretically, that are going to save the city millions of dollars. So we have tried to address, we've had the engineers kind of combing through the agreements and the issues in Fox Creek. We've tried to make sure we've gotten everything addressed in there. And if you'd like to hear from Kevin Cothe, the chief engineer, you know, he can come up here and address some of those concerns as well, but we'd have to go back to the drawing board.
Sure. And so the obligations you cite, the millions of dollars that we're not going to have to be spending, that doesn't include any legal costs in trying to go back and renegotiate such a deal?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. If there's anything else, let's go ahead and vote. Obviously, an aye vote is in favor of the amendment to the agreement. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Now, we move into yet another public hearing, so may as well stay tuned and stay right there, Jeff. And that is, we have a public hearing in action on the First Amendment to an annexation with Hershey Grove. Is there a motion to go into a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
And, oh, gosh. I'm really losing. Second by Alderman Painter, I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And at this point, if you'll go ahead and give us the overview of this, and then we'll open this up to public comment on the Hershey Grove agreement.
Yeah, this is the second one where we're somewhat connected, and there were three primary issues in this amendment. The first is the city's obligation to pursue a railroad crossing, whether it be aggregate or an overhead crossing with the ICC, and to potentially then extend Hershey Road. If we were, if the city were to do that, you know, if it's an aggregate crossing, I think some of the numbers that have been thrown around are, you know, between $2 and $3 million. We were not getting any success in getting the aggregate crossing. If you then look at overheads, you're looking at more of, you know, many, many millions of dollars to have that constructed. So part of this agreement provides that we no longer have to pursue those, that crossing with the ICC. We no longer have to construct Hershey Road any further. Our obligations end with this. The city staff believes that's a big victory for the city. The other primary issue that we had in this situation is dedication of parkland. The agreement as is allowed the developer to dedicate some parkland south of the development. And there's no, since the development is not going further south, there is really no need for it. There was going to be limited use for that land. With the help of Alderman Howman, we went back to the homeowners. We tried to negotiate different parkland, different areas that would be dedicated as parkland, and this is really what took probably some of the longest time of coming up with this deal and negotiating this deal. As you heard from the president of the Homeowners Association, at the end of the day, they weren't really interested in park area. They were more interested in trails and sidewalks. So the developer agreed to put in what we're estimating about $300,000 worth of trails and sidewalks that the homeowners wanted, so we really see this as a win-win. It fulfills the parkland dedication requirements, and we don't get land that we really can do nothing with south of the railroad. So that is essentially the nuts and bolts of this agreement. Also addresses certain street improvements and other sidewalk and other issues like that. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions of Mr. Jurgens. Seeing none, thank you very much. And is anyone who wants to come forward and speak on this agreement? Okay. Is there a motion, then, to begin discussion on the council to approve the First Amendment?
Do we have to close public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So I'll make a motion when you close public comment.
Thank you, keeping me straight there. Moved by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Lauer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are out of public hearing, and now is there a motion on the substance? I apologize for that.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Howman to approve the First Amendment to the annexation agreement in Hershey Grove. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion.
Mayor, I'd just like to say I was pleased that the residents of Hershey Grove came to ask for a different type of park, and appreciate that Snyder Company was working with the residents to respond to their wants and needs, and also the time that the city staff took to make this happen. So, thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Alderman Lauer.
Just an overview and an observation that when we do this, we shouldn't be so isolated. We should open it up to the rest of the city. Many of the citizens are unaware of the schedule, et cetera, and I'm not sure that they would speak out anyway, but I'm going to speak for them. There is ongoing expense every time we do something like this. When we add to that trail, when we add, and I understand sidewalks, certainly, we're going to improve with sidewalks, but every time we extend that trail, there is an ongoing expense years down the road. And we've got some of those expenses on our plate right now that we're going to be discussing very shortly, and that comes out of the general fund. And we've got a hole. And so a decade from now, I hope somebody goes back to the minutes and recognizes that we had this discussion.
Just for the record, you're clarifying that for consequence, every time we expand Constitution Trail, you mean when we might have to repave Constitution Trail?
At some point in, well, it's not just the paving. We've got tree trimming. We've got a number of horticulture things that we do along the trail. It's very nice, but it's an amenity. It's something that's absolutely not probably a need. And it really wouldn't matter if it was Constitution Trail or another park. If we continue to add to our 45-plus parks, there is an expense that goes along with that, and I'm not sure that we're effectively using all the park land that we currently have. And so I just want to bring that to our attention. We're cognizant of it. I hope that the community understands that, at least I'm thinking about that. It is an expense. It's an ongoing expense. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think for the folks at Hershey Grove bought their homes, it was with an expectation that there would be green space for them, as many other developments have had. So, well, yes, it's an ongoing expense. It was, again, it was an expectation that the residents and the buyers had in purchasing property there.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? All right. At this point, if there's not, then we, the motion on the floor, an aye is, of course, in favor of the agreement, and nay is, of course, in opposition. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. All right, now we move right along to the public hearing on the Third Amendment to an annexation agreement with Charles Palmer. Is there a motion to go, to open our public hearing on Charles Palmer?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Howman. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're opening the public hearing.
Thank you. This is the last amendment on the agenda tonight. It involves the development with Charles Palmer. This stems from litigation that was actually filed against the city, against Mr. Palmer, or by Mr. Palmer, and involved two primary issues. One, the city's requirement to extend Mitsubishi Motorway South over Sugar Creek, and if that also addressed the abatement of certain development fees, about $1.4 million. On the first issue with the extension of Mitsubishi Motorway over Sugar Creek, city staff estimated that this would be something that would cost the city millions and millions and millions of dollars. Very expensive to build a bridge over Sugar Creek. It was not something that this area is currently being developed. It was not something that we believe that the council really wanted to spend millions and millions of dollars on right now. But it was, again, it was a litigation that was filed by Mr. Palmer to require the city to extend that motorway. As part of this settlement, the city will have no further obligations to extend the road. We will not have to build a bridge. We will not have to go any further. We will not have any other construction obligations with regards to that roadway in this development. The other issue, then, is the development fee, which is 1.4 million, approximately $1.4 million. There was a provision in the annexation agreement that allowed abatement of that development fee over a period of time, and that was because the city stopped its development of Mitsubishi Motorway before a certain point, because the next phase is going to be building a bridge. So in lieu of, the city is waiving or reducing or abating, however you want to look at it, that $1.4 million, but on the flip side of that, we're not, we don't have a multimillion-dollar obligation to extend the roadway any further. So overall, we see this as a big win for the city. We will collect $50,000. It's a nominal amount. When you compare it to $1.4 million, but we wanted to get every dime we could get for the city, so they are going to pay $50,000 for the development fee. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Jurgens. Seeing none, thank you very much. And at this point, is there anyone who wants to speak? Any public comment on this?
I'll make a motion that we open a public hearing.
Okay.
Are we closing it? Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Yeah, we've opened it.
Oh, we opened, okay.
Yeah.
Never mind. Withdrawn.
Well, at this point, okay, did you make the motion to close the public hearing, since we have no one to speak on this?
I'll do that.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed now. Can we move, since we're all in the merry motion-making, you know, mood? Is there a continuing, excuse me, is there a motion to approve the ordinance of the Third Amendment to the annexation agreement with Charles Palmer? I'll move for that approval as presented, Mayor. Moved by Alderman Sage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Howman. Any discussion? All right. Let's go ahead and vote. An aye, she's in favor of the agreement as amendment. We have nine to zero, and there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. And we move right along to the presentation of the Empire Street Corridor Development Project, TIF, Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan, in consideration of approving an ordinance to set a date for and to approve a public notice of a public hearing for the Empire Street Redevelopment Project. Again, so the, tonight, just so that everyone's clear, we're not actually taking action on it, other than to, if the council chooses, to move forward to set a date for and approve a public hearing.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Austin Grammer, Economic Development Coordinator, here tonight to present to you, along with Mike Weber from PGAV, the redevelopment plan for the Empire Street Corridor Redevelopment Project area. But before I begin with that, I'd like to take a quick flip back in time to when we passed the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan laid out for us specific action steps that we could take related to economic development and encouraging reinvestment in our community. And in the comprehensive plan, it identified Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three development areas. And as you can see on this map, Tier One development area of the Colonial Plaza, Towanda Plaza, and really this whole area that we've highlighted for redevelopment in this proposed TIF district.
Austin, if I could just interrupt you for just one second. I'm going to be turning over the chair of the meeting to Alderman Schmidt.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. So the comp plan highlighted this area that we're focusing on this evening as a Tier One priority area for infill development and redevelopment. The comprehensive plan had an economic development section that, again, calls out for the prioritization of infill development in order to attract development into the core of the city, as opposed to going out to greenfield sites. The plan also laid out key strategies that we could take, steps that we could take to implement the plan, prioritizing infill development, encouraging private reinvestment, targeting efforts to target specific areas that could be targeted for redevelopment, and also as part of redeveloping the, attracting redevelopment to the community, improving the appearance of the city's primary entrances, which although sometimes we don't necessarily think about it, as we all live here, but as people come in from other parts of the community, they see the Empire Street Corridor at the intersection of Veterans Parkway as a key entrance to the community, especially if you're coming in from the airport or coming in from the east. The comprehensive plan identified certain metrics that we could use to evaluate our success in implementing those steps, watching and monitoring the equalized assessed value of these sites. We want to make sure that the EAV goes up, again, monitoring the EAV in specific areas that we identify for revitalization, and also ensuring that we take steps to enhance our gateways. And the plan identifies and recommends certain economic development tools that we can put into place in these areas. And two of those tools, we are working to put to place right now, tax increment financing and also sales tax rebates and development agreements. So tonight, we are presenting to you some work that consulting firm and also staff has put together, the redevelopment plan for the Empire Street Corridor. This entire plan, it's quite a lengthy document, is available on the city's website at cityBLM/tiff. So if you have interested citizens in your ward that want to know more about this, I encourage you to direct them to this webpage. The steps that we've taken to get here to date, on August 24th, we approved an ordinance to authorize the creation of the plan. Also, on August 24th, we were proactive and adopted a inducement resolution to encourage the owner of the Colonial Plaza Shopping Center to take steps to redevelop that shopping center and attract the new Dick's Sporting Goods store to that center. On November 23rd, the council passed an ordinance adopting and establishing an interested parties registry. I apologize, it says December 4th, but it's actually November 30th. A copy of the plan was put on file in the clerk's office, and now here we are tonight, considering an ordinance to set a time and date for the required public hearing and also setting the time for the joint review board. Going forward, if the proposed ordinance that's before you tonight is passed, the joint review board meeting would take place on January the 6th, and then on February the 8th, the public hearing would take place. The TIF Act outlines certain dates and timeframes that have to take place, where certain meetings and certain dates can be no more than 14 days or no more than 28 days. It provides some statutory delays in order to allow public feedback and public comment on all of the different steps of the process. And then in late February or early March, you would be presented with the ordinances to adopt the plan, designate the TIF area, and then adopt tax increment financing for the area. And again, the TIF Act outlines that that needs to be at least 14 days or 90 days from the close of the public hearing. So that's why we have the timeline that we have. So at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Mike Weber with PGAV, who's done a great job of putting this plan together, and he'll take it from there. Where's Mike? There he is.
Before you get started, I just want to explain to people that Mayor Renner's been feeling really, really sick tonight and was fading fast, and wasn't sure he was going to make it, and indeed, that was a true prediction. So we'll pinch-hit the best we can here.
Good evening. Arrow keys? Good evening, Mayor Protem and Alderman. As Austin mentioned, the only thing you're doing tonight in terms of action is passing an ordinance to set a time and place for the public hearing. And what I'd like to do is give you a brief overview of the eligibility of the area and the components of the TIF redevelopment plan. But by the time you get to the point of making a decision as to whether or not to approve and set up and establish this TIF district, the council is going to be making three key findings. One, does the area qualify under the provisions of the TIF Act? Two, is there evidence that the area on the whole hasn't been subject to growth and investment on the part of private enterprise? And I mentioned "on the whole." And the area would not reasonably be redeveloped or developed or improved without the adoption of this TIF program. And the document that Austin mentioned that's online contains those findings in detail. In terms of the boundaries, they're illustrated on the map on display here. There are about, there are 65 parcels of real property in the area. The newspaper article that I read about this proposal The newspaper article that I read about this proposal said it was 200 and some acres, that includes all the highway right-of-way. The net area is 148 acres. In terms of eligibility, in order to qualify a TIF area, you would need to be able to make a finding that the area meets the definition of as a conservation area, a blighted area, or a combination of the two. In this case, we will be making a finding, or the city council will be making a finding that the area qualifies as a conservation area. And in order to qualify as a conservation area, more than half of the buildings in the area need to be over at least 35 years old or older in that case. In this case, there is more than 50% of the buildings over 35 years of age. If you can make that finding, then you need to make three, or have to find three out of 13 factors of bliding factors that are listed in the TIF Act under the definition of conservation area. In this case, we will be able to make a finding of deteriorated buildings and site improvements, and in the TIF plan document, you can see photographic evidence of that in the appendix of the plan. You also have a high vacancy rate of the taxable buildings in the area, most of it being commercial, 270,000 square feet of space is currently vacant. That's a vacancy rate of 41%. That's a huge vacancy rate for commercial properties. And then we, for the third factor, we have declining property values. The fair market value in this area over the last five years has declined by 7.4 million dollars. That translates to an equalized assessed valuation reduction of 2.4 million. Now, while the tax rate in this area has gone up 5% over the last five years, the tax collection in 2015 is actually down 11% or $136,000 less than what was collected five years ago. So from a qualification standpoint, it qualifies as a conservation area. It's an area that's not blighted, or not yet blighted, but may become one if you don't do something about it. In terms of the redevelopment plan, the plan needs to set out certain findings and make, and spell out its proposals, including the general land uses to apply, the description of the potential redevelopment projects, and the estimated TIF project costs. Those are all spelled out in the area. But in the end, the objective of the plan is to try and elevate values in this area. Right now, the fair market value of commercial properties in this area are running between $52 to $57 a square foot of building space. Healthy commercial property values in the Bloomington northern, normal area run $80 to $100. Our goal is to get it back into that range through reinvestment by private enterprise. Other findings include conformance with the comprehensive plan, the area as a whole not being subject to growth and investment on the part of private enterprise, and the evidence that supports that is the conditions in the area, the vacancies that I mentioned, and the declining property values. And then from a but-for standpoint, in other words, that we don't expect investment to occur unless we do something about it, such as TIF, that's supported by the conditions in the area, as well as supported by the fact that you approved Resolution Number 29 that supported the whole concept to using TIF to help leverage private investment to bring Dick's Sporting Goods into the former vacant Kmart store. And we also estimate the EAV after redevelopment, if we can hit that target range, that we could increase the equalized assessed value in the area by about 12 to 13 million. And Section 5 of the plan has other legal findings that I won't go into those details right now, but you can study those in the document itself.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Lower.
Can you tell me if we excluded the government-owned properties that are currently tax-free, such as the high school property and the post office, if this would qualify, continue to qualify as a conservation area?
If we exclude them?
If we excluded those, that's correct.
Yeah, it would still.
It would still.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually had a question. I am, the last time we had a TIF, there was concern expressed about the fact that it's 23 years in length before payouts were made. And I'd always had the understanding that we could structure it in such a way that there might be incremental payouts over the course of the TIF. Could you talk about the different ways we might structure this, thinking particularly about the other taxing bodies like the school district?
Right. Well, right now, property values are going down, so that's problem number one. But if we do have success and significant success, it is conceivable that you could declare an annual surplus when you get into the TIF program, meaning you don't need all of the TIF money that you capture via the TIF process for TIF projects, and therefore you declare it surplus, it goes back to the county, and then that money goes back to all the affected taxing districts on a pro-rata basis based on the most recent tax rate. In other words, your taxing district's tax rate share of the total tax rate. So, or you can memorialize it in the TIF plan itself and just decide upon a certain percentage of tax increment that's collected every year could be declared as surplus, and you just follow through with that over the course of the TIF so long as the TIF is in existence. But if you're going to think about that, you need to think about the potential trade-offs. The more you would declare surplus, the less you have to make projects work, so, but it's perfectly legal to do exactly that.
And does that occur then during the course of the, you know, getting up to the public hearing for this, of the negotiations for that happen at the front end before any ordinance is passed, or is it, or is it generally?
Yeah, you can try and work out those arrangements. In fact, the meeting of the joint review board is a meeting of most of the affected taxing districts. The TIF Act spells out who serves on that board, and those items or those types of concepts could be discussed at that meeting, and they may make a recommendation to do something like that. The other option is to perhaps formally or commit to in some fashion to, as redevelopment projects are paid off, let's say Colonial Plaza gets renovated, rebuilt, reoccupied, in 15 years, we pay off those costs, we take that property out of the TIF district, and all this gain in EAV increment now becomes taxable. So there's a number of ways we could try and set it up to where the taxing districts benefit within that 23-year period.
Interesting. Thank you, Alderman Black.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. You know, it seems like whenever we do something like this, I tend to find that there are some folks who, you know, why is the city involving themselves with a consultant? But this is the kind of detail-oriented analytical approach that people demand as to why we're moving forward in these types of projects. I have a couple of questions, and one of them will be for Austin at one point. But I see in here we got the Veterans Parkway kind of grabbed in here as well, but only parts of it. One thing that I know Jim Carch has talked about in the past, and I didn't see it listed in here, is the, I don't remember the term specifically, but it's when like an ambulance or a police officer wants to get through there, delays the traffic, or trips it off. Kevin, we've talked about this, what's that called?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a GPS-driven unit, when the vehicle approaches the signal, it actually trips the signal and allows that emergency vehicle through. It could also work for school buses in a two-tiered system where it wouldn't be as immediate, and also our city buses to make both of those programs more efficient.
I see Kevin coming up here. What's the word I'm looking for on this one? What's that called, you know, it's like?
Public works improvements?
No, it's like, it's a specific, preemption, that's it, the preemptor, yes. So I didn't see that listed in here as a potential use for some of these funds. Would that be qualifying under a potential TIF down the road?
In the, what we call the TIF budget, which is the table that includes the estimated redevelopment project costs, we have a line item called public works improvements.
Sure.
And I would say that at least a portion of that could qualify. The thing you need to be a little bit careful of is whatever you spend money on in that TIF district is primarily and must serve and benefit the properties in the TIF.
Sure.
So if you're instituting a system such as that, it probably has a broader benefit, so we would have to come up with some rational basis to make a judgment call as to how much of that could be paid for with TIF by being able to make a finding that 50% of it is really benefiting the TIF district.
Gotcha. Okay, that answers my question, because I saw it was very general in there, but I was curious, because that's a prior conversation.
Years ago, we used to try and get very, very specific on TIF costs. We now stick with the more generic line items to keep that flexibility, so we don't have to come back and amend the plan all the time.
Certainly. So from where I sit sometimes, I'll get feedback from people that will look at a neighborhood or an area and say, what are you going to do about that? And TIFs are one way we can address some types of economic blight. What other tools can we bring to bear, and this is more of a question for Austin, outside of TIFs, that we can see an improvement on such a short timeframe, but also on such a large scale? Are there any tools that we would be able to have?
Well, as the council is already somewhat committed to in the form of the inducement resolution for Colonial Plaza, that's a $10 million project that had a $4 million gap identified, and so we're seeking to fill that gap with $2 million roughly in tax increment financing rebates of property tax over 20 years, but also $2 million in rebates of sales tax for new-to-the-city retailers over a period of 10 years. So a sales tax rebate combined with the tax increment financing, putting those two tools together, but then also the tax abatement, which is a tool that we've recently, that the council recently approved for the foundry development with Green Top Grocery, but also that we packaged also with a sales tax rebate. So, you know, you've got to use the right tool for the right type of project.
So, what you're saying, and correct me if I'm misspeaking for you here, is that this, for this scope of a project in an area, a TIF is the best way that we can address that in the shortest amount of time?
I think so. I, one of the things when I've been talking with developers, you know, as they're looking at different sites, you know, obviously they want to go to a greenfield site where that's the easiest to develop because there's nothing there, and they don't have to pay to demolish anything or take on a building that's already been configured for somebody else's uses and then have to reconfigure it for theirs. So, but in a situation like we have here with the Circuit City building, you know, it was configured just for Circuit City's needs, and now as we have potential retailers look at that building, they say, well, I need maybe additional 4,000 square feet, I'm going to need to bump the walls out, what kind of incentives are available to help me do that? Well, we can talk about doing certain things, but if we don't have a tool in place that we can reliably say, look, we have this available, the council approved it, it's a tool that's available right now, the developer will say, well, I don't know if you're really serious, maybe I'll go to another community where I can, where they already have such a tool in place, and I can take advantage of that and invest my money and get a quicker return. So I think that when the council makes a commitment like this to committing to attract reinvestment in this specific, this area, it says to the business community, to investors, that the council is serious about doing business and attracting investment. Does that answer your question?
Sure does.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Alderman Sage?
I might add, there's also the Illinois Business District law, which is something you could consider where you do an add-on sales tax. But having passed the recent?
I'm not sure if it's too popular.
Right, right. But it is available.
Alderman Sage?
So, Austin, maybe just a follow-up question to you, and tagging on a little bit to what Scott asked. I'm assuming related to the sales tax abatement, this is similar to other projects that we've reviewed the past few years, where new businesses have to come in, and they have to, they have to generate and achieve certain targets of sales and generate sales tax dollars before any abatement happens. I mean, so they are incentivized to come in and be successful, they just don't show up with their hand out, right?
That's correct. Yes, in the, in the terms of the redevelopment agreement that we're still working on with the owner of Colonial Plaza, we've set a floor of $20 million in annual revenue must be generated by the retailers, and that's designed to ensure that as the landlord, the landlord goes out and attracts retailers that will generate a significant amount of sales. If I were him, I would be trying to get retailers filling those spaces that would generate 40 million, so I'll be sure to hit that threshold. And in that situation, those are going to be attractive retailers, they're going to be a benefit to the community, they're going to create jobs, and also attract more customers to this whole part of the city, which will all benefit from.
Sure. And then a follow-up question. Again, we often hear the comment that somehow we're picking winners and losers, but when it comes to something like a TIF district, the reality is, is that has become the rule rather than the exception. At least what I've, what I've seen and listened to over the past half a dozen years here, right, is people who want to come in and do business expect that something like a TIF district will be available for them to come in and provide some of that, some of those incentives, financial and otherwise, to be able to come here and do business. Maybe 10 years ago, 15 years ago, you know, perhaps the TIF district was more of an exception, more of a rare kind of an inducement to bring, bring new businesses in. Now, again, based on what I've heard up here the last half a dozen years or so, everybody is pulling out all the stops, if you, if you will, in order to create as financially appealing situation as possible in order to attract new business. And so, to me, it's just simply, it's part of economic development nowadays, right, is something like a TIF district and sales tax abatement, some of these other tools that we have. We have to do it, or they'll go across the street, they'll go to another community or something like that. It is an expectation nowadays, really has nothing to do with picking winners and losers, in my opinion.
Correct. It's a way to stay competitive in the market, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Lower? Well, my concern is that, I'm not, I'm not sure that we're picking winners and losers, but we're certainly making an area of our city more attractive and lowering the cost of operation, and we've got competitors. You know, this is not the only blighted area or nearly blighted area of the city. I represent a large area that has not developed in probably over a decade or redeveloped. And one of the properties is decades old. It's, it dates back to prior to World War II. And I appreciate the fact that we're trying to do something, but I'm afraid that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here. Attracting a business from normal and getting into a bidding war is not my idea of economic development. We have, there are certain big-box stores. I recently read a paper by the Cato Institute, and it kind of talks about the sporting goods and the different retailers that are in the, in the business, and several of those, we've got them in the local area, Peoria has one, Champaign has another, look for these TIF districts to get that break. On the other hand, Gander Mountain, which is a competitor, avoids those because they want to strike out on their own, they want to be independent. And so I'm wondering if there isn't another way to attract businesses that don't necessarily need this, and still, and still reach the goal that we, that we set out for ourselves here. You know, I hate to say it, but really, we've been, we've been inundated with a number of tax and fee increases in the last few years, and we're looking at more. That's really the way to induce business. Why isolate a small area like this when we have so many areas of the city that need help? It seems to me that we really ought to look at being more conservative about how we're spending our money. Just me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion then to set a date for and approve public notice for a public hearing, and that date would be, the recommended date is?
February the 8th.
February the 8th, at the regular city council meeting on February 8th.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? A second by Alderman Painter, Howman. Nobody knows your name tonight, I'm so sorry. Nobody knows your name tonight, I'm so sorry. Okay, is there any other comment or questions? All right, we'll go ahead and start voting. Let's see how well I do here. And--
Show the display button?
Where is this display button, millennial, millennial man? Okay, thank you. All right. And I am not voting because I've just taken on a different role, so there is one nay to announce. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Lauer.
Thank you. And then, next up is consideration of an ordinance for our tax levy for the fiscal year that begins on May the 1st. Assistant City Rasmussen, did you want to introduce this? It's certainly something we've talked about in the past.
Yes, thank you very much. Is Patty Lynn, Patty Lynn available? Great, thank you very much. I was looking for you in the back of the room and I thought you must have left, my goodness. Okay, thank, good, thank you very much. Are you ready with this, Patty Lynn? I think if you make a quick announcement about that, that would be fine.
We've talked about the property tax a couple of times already this year--
Yes, we have done, yeah, a couple times, yes.
A couple times. We haven't made any changes since our last discussion, so I'm here to any, answer any questions that you may have.
Are there questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the tax levy in the amount of $24,63066?
Still moved.
Moved by Alderman Painter. I have a second.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, if it's the same people, probably, yes, thank you. A second by Alderman Howman. Any, any comments? Okay. Okay. Yay, I did it right this time. There are no nays to announce. Okay. Moving right along, we have a, an update, a progress report on our city infrastructure projects. And Mr. Rasmussen, I think you have a few people that are going to come forward and give us a brief update?
I will. Thank you very much. And I, what we'll do on this one is, we have five presentations here, and I'm going to ask each of the department heads who's responsible for those to come up and give them so that they can tell you the project that they've been doing. And I'll just have them come up one right after the other. The first one will be, and I'll announce them all now, even though there'll be five of them coming, the, they each only have a couple of minutes to talk about each one, and so it will be relatively brief. But we'll ask Russ Waller, our facilities manager, to talk about facilities, and then Jay Tetzloff to talk about parks, Assistant Chief Baze to talk about the police projects, Kevin Cothe will talk about Public Works, and then Bob Yale will talk about the water projects. And I'm going to ask each of them to talk about the projects and that they were responsible for and how we spent the taxpayers' dollars on these projects in the last year. And so, please feel free to ask your questions after each one. We don't have to wait until they're all done. And I'll start out with Mr. Russ Waller, our facilities manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp, City Council. I'd be presenting the-- There we go. Be presenting the facility master plan, projects we accomplished this year. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I presented the facilities master plan to you. And during that presentation, I was explaining the low funding and the backlog of improvements, and that the money we are spending is to address the life safety issues primarily. And the two projects represent that pretty well tonight. First one is the repairs to the Abraham Lincoln parking garage. We spent approximately $250,000 on that project. Starting with the pictures at the upper left, not necessarily a life safety issue, but it does ultimately result in that, and that's the ceiling. You'll see the joints on the top level of the parking garage basically been replaced and then a very durable coating put over that joint. What that does is it keeps moisture from migrating into those joints, which the moisture and the salt water degrades the, degrades the concrete and eventually chips and chunks of concrete can fall, damage vehicles or even injure someone. So it does relate ultimately to a life safety issue. More importantly, though, I guess, are the other two slot pictures and a series of pictures. The sex one is the doors. There are a few doors that are actually sticking, so when a person would go through, the door would slam shut and make it very difficult to open. So obviously, it is a life safety issue, and so any door that was having problems, we did replace. And then the biggest part of the whole project was the last pictures there, which is the Lower level stairs, approximately the first three levels of the deck, the stairs were severely deteriorated. Some of the treads were coming up, creating tripping hazards, and some of the concrete was actually so degraded that you could possibly have slipped and create injuries. So those, some of the stairs in the next picture basically were completely rebuilt, and then every single set of stairs that was worked on received a new tread. That work is 100% complete. We have not made a final payment, but that work is done now. Moving on to the next project, and that was the replacement of the fire sprinkler system in the police department garage, parking garage. That project was about approximately $190,000. Not a whole lot of slides there, basically, just in the upper-left corner, we show the old piping. That is piping, that is a, just a black piping, susceptible to corrosion. It's kind of difficult to see, but in the, the open section of the pipe, you can see a lot of sludge that's built up in the pipe. The lower-right picture is actually the replacement piping, and as you can see, it's actually a more durable galvanized piping. So that'll last much longer than the previous piping. So that project is not 100% complete. There are still a few minor things to be done, and then we do have to test the system before we finally accept it. Any questions on those two? Thank you.
Great to see. Thank you so much.
So the only project that Parks Rec Cultural Arts was able to complete with funding in terms of a capital project was Eagle View Park. This is a project I came in at the very end on. John Kennedy, my predecessor, saw this project through till almost the end. So we broke ground about a year and a half ago and then cut the ribbon this year. It's about a million-dollar park. This is a park that's found, it's only in First Park on east side of Towanda Barnes, so between Fort Jesse and G approximately. So this serves the Eagle View area. Many times, it's called Eagle View South. It's actually the residents who want it called Eagle View. Got to help with, work with Jim on this project near the end. It was a lot of fun to complete the project. So this is about a million-dollar park, $400,000 came from a state grant, and were able to develop 14.5 acres of land. And the multi-use field is the top right of the concept there. And this is, was a place where you can do lots of different sports, lacrosse is getting bigger, soccer, football. And this is the only place in Bloomington where you can play full game of cricket. Still not using the correct ball to play with the full-size field, but this is the only field in cricket, or in Bloomington to play cricket right now. San Volleyball Court, trails, and all the fields. This is a, this park took 10 years to develop, got land in 2005, and obviously, as Jim probably remembers real well, took a while to get the funding through and be able to complete this project. Questions?
It's great to see.
And I thank you, Assistant Chief Baze, you're up now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'll make this quick as you want it. As you know, for several years, you guys have recognized the need to restore range and authorized funding over the years to accommodate that. Budget constraints have limited the progress of how we can proceed each year, so it's been very incremental. We've been focusing on the indoor firing range. The condition of the range, due to limited budgets in the years past, resulted in a deterioration to a degree that's, as represented in some of these photos, with mold and ceilings coming through with roofing and stuff. We've been able to successfully re-roof the buildings out there. What we completed in this fiscal year so far is the mold and lead mitigation of the facility. It was funded with money that was encumbered and carried over from FY15. We were able to get that under contract at the end of the year, and the work was completed here in the last couple of months. I have to say, Facilities was actually very participative and had a great role in us doing it, and we've got a lot of momentum moving thanks, thanks to the appointment of Mr. Waller and the position he's in. Couldn't do it without him. So we conducted the lead and mold mitigation, and our plan is with monies that's approved in this existing budget is to install a new HVAC system to prevent a return to where we just came from. So you can see here, this is the indoor range after the mold and lead has been mitigated from it. Part of the restoration process that'll continue is the restoring of some of the drywall, just a very little bit in the, in the welcoming area, and the HVAC system hopefully be done by the end of the fiscal year, and we'll be back in the range using it by the time the cold comes back on so we can keep our officers up to speed.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Evening again.
Good evening.
On the Public Works side, you see a picture of a sewer on Market at McLean. It's a three-foot brick sewer that we lined from the 1800s. The sewer went underneath a number of homes in the two blocks east and south of McLean and Market, heading over to Clayton and Monroe. We were able to successfully line that sewer right underneath people's basements without causing any distress to them. That's one of the bigger liners that we put in this past year. We did a bunch of smaller lines as well. Total of $1.6 million of sewer lining out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund. We also finished up some resurfacing work from the 2014 program. You'll see there pictures of before and after. The top is before on MacArthur, just east of Livingston. A couple of blocks there that got new curb and gutter, new sidewalks or repaired sidewalks, as well as new handicap ramps. We also had some sewers that had to be repaired, as well as a new water main that was installed in that block. And that's what pushed that project into a couple of year period, was just trying to coordinate and get all that work done. But now, you can see in the bottom left, a brand-new curb and gutter street and sidewalks that's handicap accessible, and we're thrilled with how that upgraded the neighborhood. In addition, this year, we had $2.4 million of local motor fuel tax money. We used $1.9 million of that for resurfacing projects. The remainder went to sidewalks and pavement preservation. The major projects under that resurfacing was East Oakland Avenue, east of Hershey. That four-lane section out to Old Farm in that area was looking really bad, required a lot of patching, and so that got, got fixed as well this year. Going back to sewers, this, there's two blocks of East Jackson Street and one block of Catherine Street that had no public sewer in it. So these homes were being served by private sewer services that ran, in some cases, to a backyard alley sewer. In other cases, they ran to the neighbor's house, and then to the neighbor's house, and then to the neighbor's house. Yeah, that's actually how it was on Catherine. There was three homes hooked together that went to the sewer on Monroe, as crazy as it is. But unfortunately, there are sections in town that have no known public sewer. In this section of Jackson Street, we had a lady approach us over 10 years ago saying, I can't get my sewer fixed. They repaired it in the backyard, but it's going to happen again, it's just a matter of time. The frustrating thing was that, at that time, the sewer fund was in very bad shape. And then, you know, in 2009 through 2012, we had some rate increases that actually allowed us to get to this point where we can actually fix some of these areas that don't have a public sewer. These people pay for sewer service every, every month on their water bill, but there's no known public sewer, and it's just the way the city developed. For whatever reason, they don't have it. So we're thrilled to be able to get them actually a legitimate sewer in front of their house that we know we can maintain and that they can connect to. And that was the case on, on Jackson Street. We paid for it out of the Sewer Enterprise Fund. On Catherine, we paid for it out of community development block grant money because there was a house that was going to be rehabbed there as part of that, I think it's 21 homes across the city that one group is doing. And they tore that house down, and we're going to replace it, but there was no sewer hooked to. So we were able to use that to help improve that neighborhood with a public sewer and also a public storm sewer. Another big thing this year was the master plans. You're probably tired of hearing it, but we got the Storm and Sanitary Sewer Master Plan, the Sidewalk Master Plan, the Bike Master Plan all passed this year. In progress, we have the Streets Master Plan, and that's moving along. Hopefully, you'll see that early next year. Oops, sorry, went too far. And then, on the unwelcome surprises side, the left picture, yeah, there's a lot of rain this spring, and even into July, we had that big rain on July 9th. And so there's quite a few complaints of flooding. You can see this person's yard is pretty wet. We also experienced some distress at the Miller Park Dam. Part of the dam along Morris Avenue kind of slipped and the earth fell away, and it was leaking a little bit. This is the repair that was in progress. It's all patched back now and looking very good. And then, many of you are aware that we're doing some repair work on Main and Empire right now. This was one of the earlier digs. We had done some televising out there and found a bunch of problem areas with Main Street and Empire both. Some very old sewers in that area. While we're there, we're trying to get it all fixed so that we don't have to disrupt the traffic anymore out there. When we get these repairs done, the sewers will be lined out there, but the point repairs have to be done first. So that's it for Public Works. If you've got any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Incredibly busy year.
Yes.
Thank you.
[laughing]
Last but not least.
Last but not least, yes. Thank you for having me. I have a collage of photos, a lot of which we'll walk through, that most of the public may not see, and some around the horse you may not see either. I'll start at the top left, Lake Bloomington Wetlands. This was accomplished through a grant from Coca-Cola and in-kind donations from the city of Bloomington. The Nature Conservancy actually obtained the grant from Coca-Cola to help us put those wetlands in, one of our great partners up at the lake in the watershed. Helps us reduce the nitrates and the phosphates. It's an example area we can monitor more closely to see how those might be implemented across our watersheds in its entirety. I think my first presentation as water director was the top right, the lakeshore stabilization. That was Enterprise Funds, and again, a grant that the Friends of Everbloom obtained for us through Fish and Wildlife. That helps stabilize the shorelines as well as provide fish habitat. Bottom right, we brought that to you a couple of weeks ago, and that one's actually a picture of a different stream, but that's what that'll look like when that's done. Stream stabilization at Lake Evergreen, again, trying to reduce the loading. This particular stream contributes a significant amount of loading to Lake Evergreen, want to reduce the erosion. Again, levy that with a grant opportunity as well. Filter replacement is in the bottom left. We're removing, recreating some gravel that's under drains, allows us to put medium in there, reduce taste and odor that come about in the fall and spring sometime. I'm going to stay up at the lake, and Kevin could have well took these as well. These are pictures of a great collaboration between Public Works and the Water Department, where the Water Department paid for them, but Public Works managed design and construction, so thanks out to Public Works on that. The top two are the Lake Evergreen Spillway Bridge. That started last fall and finished up in the springtime, though it was probably one of the most beautiful views in the wintertime, an office view. It was very cold and windy, so the staff put up with a lot to get that done on time.
Yeah.
The bottom one is resurfacing of some of the roads around Lake Bloomington and the neighborhood home area there. Some roads up there need a repair, so we kind of combine into Public Works and they take care of the work and we pay for it, so. Mechanical maintenance, so we've kind of walked through the lake and production. This is how we kind of get water from place to place. Top right is a variable frequency drive at the Enterprise Pump Station, which pumps the Enterprise, allows us to pump up and down. About $25,000 for two of those to go in, allows us to meter the pumpage as we need throughout there. Top right and bottom left are our Supervisor, Control and Data Acquisition, SCADA, allows us to monitor and control our system, system-wide. So the top one, we're upgrading our old controllers from time to time. There's no spare parts, so we've got to upgrade over time and have some spare parts to keep us going. Otherwise, we're in this scenario, as we were over the weekend, of manning a pump manually to turn it on and off as we needed till we got it replaced and tied back in. Bottom left, similar, just updating software to make sure we can control it and monitor the system.
The bottom right is an actuator that controls a valve in Enterprise Pumping Station that controls the inflow of water to the wet well before it gets pumped back out. It wasn't closing all the way, so we'd flood our station once in a while. So, we got that taken care of, saved our resources and saved a lot of cleanup effort. On the distribution side, the top left are the Main Street Transmission Mains. If anybody drove up Main Street near Bromin a few months ago, you noticed we had it necked down. Those are our two main transmission mains that eventually come in from the lake, they go to Fort Jesse, and these are coming to Division Street. So all the resources, all the water's coming to Division Street, come through these two. So, we operated our system a little bit differently than we have in the past. We switched over one at a time. Contractor worked well with us. Internal communication between the lake staff, distribution staff, and the pump station maintenance got that going. Nobody saw any glitches, which was our goal in the end. Bottom right is an example of one of our water main replacement projects. We have a few, try to do a few each year. This one particularly, Livingston Street, buyer and Barker area. And the funds are all Enterprise, I should highlight those as they go, but we'll touch base on the last one. We have meter services. I'll start in the top right. Each of these three sets have an inset picture, so kind of the bigger picture is older technology, and the inset picture is what we're switching to. So top left is our RF program. We are shooting for 3,000 units for the year. We're not going to get there, but that's about $400,000 worth of meter changeovers. We're at about 1,700 right now. We've seen an uptick the last few months from some additional effort we've been able to make into some other homes. The bottom left is, the bigger picture is a compound meter. It's actually out of a building in downtown Bloomington. We switched that from a four-inch compound to a two-inch, or from a turbine meter to a two-inch compound. The compound allows us to get the bigger flows and the smaller flows. The four-inch was more in line with what the building used to be used for, so the current use probably wasn't spending that meter a lot. We're losing out on revenue source from the water they use. So switching in this location, and at 140 total locations, allows us to pick up some additional revenue that we might have been missing before. Finally, the right side are meter pits, one for Tuwanda and one for Hudson, about $40,000 each. Those are fire protectors, allow us to maintain those meters while maintaining flow to those customers. That's the only water source for Hudson and Tuwanda, as well as fire protection, so that allows us a little bit more flexibility and controls the rate of revenue as well. And I think that was it on my... Any questions?
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I have a general comment. I'm sorry, yeah. So one thing I would say is that on the county board, what we used to do every year is, in the summertime, we would take a trip out to all the different projects that we were funding that year and the various stages of construction. And we work with the Open Meetings Act by bringing in the secretary with us to be able to take the notes and all that stuff, and we just post it like a regular meeting. I'd love to see us do that. You know, the clerk can handle that in this case here, because I'd love to see some of these in the middle of the project. I know the guys out there would appreciate seeing us out there as well. So, maybe at some point next year, we get a doodle poll going and just put it on the calendar.
It's a great idea, and I know we're all really proud of the progress that we're making here, and what a great opportunity to be able to say thank you directly to the people who are doing the great work for us, so. Did you want to, any wrap-up words here?
I did. I just wanted to thank these operational department directors who are out there in the streets, the buildings, the lakes, and the parks every day, helping to improve our infrastructure, and all of their office staffs who are doing all of the inside work and answering all of the questions from residents every day. And in spite of some times where we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be repaired, we are getting a lot of it done. I'd like to thank them very much for that work, and tell all of you that you don't have to take any action on this, this was just for your information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to City Manager's discussion, and I want to thank Mr. Rasmussen for being here tonight. I don't think the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting that our city manager is, his father-in-law passed away, and he is on his way home. As far as I know, he may still be in the car. It's a very, very long drive back from Utah, and so we're grateful that you're here and sitting in, and do you have any comments?
Thank you very much. I talked to Mr. Hales, he was in eastern Nebraska, and I talked to him last night, and he was trying to make it back. I told him not to kill himself. We'd take care of it here without him. So, he emailed us today that he would not be in, but he said he was doing fine, they'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah, tough, long journey in many ways, yeah. Thank you. Any information to impart, or?
If we are ready to move on to the next agenda item, I do have a City Manager's report, one item to report for.
That's what I meant, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor Protemp. I did want to make a note on leaf collection. That had been a big issue here during the last week. We had been asked to get everything cleared up by Christmas, and so the Public Works Department put everybody to work on it. We put the streets and sewers people together and leaf collection, and I would like to report today that we have gotten all the backlog cleaned up, and we're now back on schedule. However, that means there are still leaves out there, because of the people that will be picked up on the schedule will still be picked up. But we're caught up, thanks to all of the good work in the Public Works Department. The Parks Department and the Water Department also volunteered their people to help if it was necessary to get that all work done. So I think, excuse me, I think we're ready to caught up, and Kevin Cothee, are you here? Did you have anything you wanted to add to the leaf collection project? Okay, good. We're on our regular pickup schedule, regular weekly schedule. And so, on both, on trash and recycling and bulk pickup. Yes, ma'am.
Is that it? I don't know that the mayor had anything in particular. Did he, did he give you something, Scott?
He did. He passed me a note that he asked me to read.
Okay.
That I have not read, until he passed it to me, which is fine. I will happily read this, with the disclaimer, I don't seem to read or anybody else here. This is not, these are not my opinions, but this is one that, at the mayor's forum on Friday, there were some folks there that expressed their opinions about Highland Park Golf Course, and they asked Mayor Renner to read this during mayor's comments, obviously with him being ill. You know, he asked Karen to step up there, and he passed this to me, so I will read this at these folks' request. And I'm going to read this verbatim. So, "Those of us listed below are or have been active members or regular users of Highland Park Golf Course for the past several years. We are retired or near retirement age and really enjoy playing golf at Highland. We would like to have the city officials know how we feel about the course's future. In bold, please keep Highland Park Golf Course operating in its current manner. Highland is a course that is well-suited for older folks. It is not too long, not too difficult, and is fairly easy to walk. It is reasonably priced for those folks on fixed incomes. It is a good place for younger golfers to play and practice. It is a good place for the person just learning the game. It has fewer water hazards, fewer sand traps, and shorter holes. Highland is a great place to encourage families and young people to enjoy the game. The Diamond Fox Creek is fine for advanced golfers. Prairie Vista is a more open course, but there is currently no annual fee. Both of these courses are longer and harder to walk. Maybe by charging a higher fee for electric golf carts, walking in the course would be encouraged, while revenues would improve." There's a number of people who had signed this document, don't want to butcher all of their names, but it looks like about, I'd say, just about a dozen and a half names on here. So, we heard those folks speak on Friday, and Alderman Hammond was there as well, and they had a lot of ideas on how to cut costs, including sharing some of the landscaping with the citizens and some other stuff, so wanted to read that and put it in the public record.
All right, thank you. I did want to make note that our second meeting in December is next Monday, correct? And therefore, I'm assuming that Mayor Renner will have his open house this coming Friday, and township as well.
I assume so, and if there's anything different, we'll make an announcement of that effect.
Okay, thank you. So, and on to Alderman's discussion. I saw a picture of you at the turkey trot, and yeah.
I think I shared one of Jim's well, from one of the email backends, so.
Anyone? You're giving me the look over there. Okay, yeah. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a good evening. Well, that was completely...